I'd like to call the December Town Council meeting to order. Would you please all rise to salute the flag and remain standing for a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic whose stand is one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to start off by apologizing to anyone in the audience. I know there's several constituents that I said I would speak with in the week leading up to the meeting, but my phone was destroyed in a Christmas decorating accident, so I've not had a phone for the last four days. So, please excuse me if you tried getting in touch with me. With that being said, item number one, acceptance of meeting minutes. Discussion and possible vote and action with regard to the acceptance of meeting minutes from the meetings of November 7th and 20th, 2017, to be accepted and approved by the Town Council. There are a motion to approve. Motion's been made by Councilman Juicy.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Brady. Any questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Yeah, you guys have it. Item number two. Okay, I'm gonna move on from number two. We'll go back to that. And item number three as well. Item number four, DEM grant. Lisa Andoja requests discussion and possible vote for municipal approval as required by DEM for recreational grant submittal. Just to pump up the microphone and state your name for the record, please.
President Orellano, respectful members of the council, Madam Clerk, I come before you, as I do each year, seeking municipal support to submit two grants to DEM on behalf of the town. One is a small grant and one is a large grant. The amount of the small grant submittal will be a hundred thousand. The town match is twenty percent. The submittal is for Captain Stephen Only Park, the town's largest outdoor recreational facility, to include on the three baseball fields, new outdoor lighting, three new electronic scoreboards, and improvements to the sprinkler system. The large grant is for three hundred thousand. The town match is twenty percent. And it's at Camp Meem. It's to convert the former Arts and Crafts Center into a new kayaking boat education fishing center. The proposal is to preserve the Arts and Crafts building with complete restoration to include a new foundation. It's currently on stilts and expand it to include a restroom and new storage. The town would convert this much needed building as classroom space for the North Providence Junior and Senior High School for boat building restoration classes and the marine technology program. I am told by the superintendent our marine program is to be CTE certified. North Providence, as you know, does not have a vocational school and there is a great need. I am really excited that the school department's boat building curriculum and apprenticeship program has strategic partners that include URI Ship Building Program, the International Crafters Union, and Rhode Island Marine Trade Association. And as per DEM, municipal support is required to submit it. So I'm here respectfully asking your support on both of these grants.
Does anybody have any questions? Lisa Andoja?
Make a motion to...
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Juicy, seconded by Councilwoman Brady. Any other questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? You guys have it. Thank you. Item number nine, liquor license. Notice was given of a public hearing to be held this date in the Providence Journal on November 17th and 24th, 2017, for a transfer of a BV liquor license from Tina's Italian Kitchen LLC, Tina's Italian Kitchen, 1525 Smith Street, to Curriwala LLC, DBA Curriwala, Indian Cuisine, 1525 Smith Street. Is there anyone here from those entities?
Gurminder Singh from Curriwala.
Just state your name for the record.
Guldeep Singh from Curriwala.
Okay, you all have the information in front of you. Is there any questions? Do I have a motion to approve the transfer of the BV liquor license?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman DeStefanis, seconded by Councilwoman Brady. Any questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? You guys have it. Item number 10, victualing license. Town Council will consider approval of a victualing license for Curriwala LLC, DBA Curriwala Indian Cuisine, 1525 Smith Street. Does anybody have any questions on the victualing license? There being none who have a motion to approve the victualing license?
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman DeStefanis, seconded by Councilwoman Brady. Any further questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? You guys have it. Good luck. Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna go back to item number two, streetlight installation. Mayor Lombardi requests discussion and possible vote on the installation of a streetlight on Arrow Street on pole number one or pole number two. Mayor?
Thank you very much. So we have a request for a streetlight to be placed on, at that location. Might cost us a few dollars, but we put a request in for that light. So they're going to make a decision as to what pole it's gonna be put on, but there will be a light installed on that street. And I know we did have a couple of requests and thought it came from the council. We did talk with National Grid. And now, as you know, we did take over the lighting, so it'll be our responsibility to put the light up.
And does anybody have any questions? The mayor on? Do I have a motion to approve the streetlight on Arrow Street? Can you just come to the microphone?
Arrow in view though, isn't it? Yeah, yeah, so view, I thought we said, I thought it was arrow in view, right? No, no. So they're gonna take a look at, to see exactly which pole, there were two pole numbers that we had, so, but we're gonna take care of it, okay? Thank you. And I know there were a few other council members that requested that, so it'll be taken care of.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
By Councilman DeStefanis, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman DiLorenzo, any questions? Did you wanna say anything or? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? You guys have it. Item number three, Demaco claim. Mayor Lombardi requests discussion and possible vote regarding the Demaco claim.
So, Mr. Chairman, members of the council, I know this has been an issue. It's long going on. So, Mr. Demaco, I feel partly responsible for this. He had a building that was available for lease or rent on Charles Street. We had someone that came to town that wanted to open a gym. I called Mr. Demaco at that time, and I asked him if he would be interested in meeting with these individuals that wanted to put a new gym in town. It was an empty building, and I think all of us are trying to encourage as much and as many businesses to come here to town. Mr. Demaco did put an agreement together at that time. I thought it was a great facility. Honestly, within maybe six months, maybe shorter than that, there was a complaint that was filed from a neighbor or two that there was a little noise coming from the gym. Now, keep in mind, there was an automobile repair shop there prior to the gym. So I didn't really understand what the issue was as far as the noise, but I, a couple of the council people that are no longer here at that time, thought it was the right thing to heed to the request that the building or the business be closed. My honest opinion, I wanna be on the record here. And I wanna be here like I need a tumor. But it's my opinion that Mr. Demaco was not treated fair. He's looking for some compensation, and he's looking for compensation to the tune of fifty or sixty thousand dollars for what he put into the building. I think, it's my opinion, that we need to give this some serious thought and figure out a way to make an agreement with Mr. Demaco. I know a few of you have heard the story. Hopefully you agree. I think it might have taught us all a lesson, but it was just a situation where we thought that we could bring an additional business into town and fill an empty space. That being said, maybe we need to refer it, you know, to the claims committee to come back next month with a suggestion and maybe, you know, through legal counsel, but I wanna be on the record as saying this family needs to be made whole. I don't think they were treated fairly. I think the council at that time, I know most of you weren't here, but reacted instead of acted and handled it in a different manner. That being said, Mr. Chairman, I'm willing to chat with anyone that's got any questions about this, but I think there's a few council people that have been notified. We've talked with Mr. Demaco a number of times, and I just think that it needs to come to a head, so...
Does anybody have any questions for the mayor? Councilman Juicy?
Has this been in court at all?
No. And I think that it's, you know, not I think, I'm sure it's going, you know, that's probably the direction that it's going in, and maybe we could, you know, short circuit that, so to say. But again, this doesn't happen often. It's happened, and I just want everyone here to know that, where I stand on this. And I think we need to figure out a way to make these people whole.
Councilman DeStefanis?
So, I wasn't on this council when this occurred, but I will tell you that from what I have been, I'm not gonna say involved in, but brought to my attention, I think you are correct, I think the family has been put through enough. I think they extended themselves to doing whatever they could for that business that came in, and I think that some sort of compensation should be, you know, looked at. I think that, you know, maybe your, I don't know, can your office, you know, is that something your office handles? Is that what we as a council handle?
No, I think, I think, I think that, listen, it's only my opinion, Raymond, that I think, you know, if there's an agreement here, it has to be collectively with our office and the council. And I'm just willing to step up to the plate, and if I have to take the blame, I have no problem doing that, but what's right is right, and, you know, as to how people should be treated here. We encouraged someone to come to town. We put an agreement together, so to say, or we put people together to make an agreement. Business opens, and a couple of people complained. They said that when the barbells, by the way, dropped, it made a noise, and I'm saying, wait a minute, there was a car repair business there that changing tires, you know, this didn't make sense. So there were a couple of people that were convinced that we just don't want it in the neighborhood. We, and I'll say we, it wasn't me, but it's one town, we make a decision that we're gonna close them down. And here we are. So, again, if we could work together and be fair with these people, then I think it's the right thing to do.
So, you wanna, you wanna settle at fifty thousand?
Well, I think that first we should maybe talk about it at the, through the claims committee, and I'd be glad to come there and, you know, and come up with a number.
We can send it to claims, but claims is up to ten thousand payment.
Well, then maybe, maybe I should get you the final numbers, and at that point, it's gonna have to be budgeted, or maybe even think about putting it in next year's budget. At least they'll know where we're going, and the family will know that we're being genuine, so to say.
So should this go to finance?
Well, let me just state on the record, as a person who did not vote to shut the gym down, I feel as though this family should be made whole for the updates they made to the property. It was actually, it was unfortunate what happened there. And you see these gyms succeeding all over the state. I think there would have been a very successful business here in town. With that being said, I think we should send it to finance, and it could wind up in claims from there. And this way, we can all sit down and have an agreement, make an agreement, and whether it does have to go through the budget, we'll figure that out from there. So I'll make a motion to send that.
But I just thought that it was the time and the right thing to come here and discuss it with you publicly, so that there's no, well, what did you tell them? All I know is we were excited. We were, you know, it's down where, now where you are, Kenny, there, and it was, I thought it was a beautiful facility. I thought it was a great thing for the town, but here we are. So I'll be waiting for an invite to come to finance, Ray, I think you're the chairman, but I wanna make sure that the record shows as to where our office stands with this.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Thank you. Thanks for your time.
Motion's been made by Councilman DiLorenzo, is there a second? Seconded by Councilman Juicy, any questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number 11, victualing license. Town Council will consider approval of a victualing license for Fresh Pita LLC, DBA, Fresh Pita, 1385 Minto Spring Avenue. Is there anyone here from Fresh Pita? Can you just step to the podium, please? All right, just state your name for the record.
Sorry?
Just state your name for the record.
My name is Yelena Nuey.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? You all have the information in front of you? Do I have a motion to approve the victualing license for Fresh Pita?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman DeStefanis, seconded by Councilman Faola. Any further questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? You guys have it. Good luck.
Thank you so much. We look forward to seeing you.
Thank you. Item number 12, victualing license. Town Council will consider approval of a victualing license for Anur Asbe, DBA Mediterranean Pizza, 2220 Minto Spring Avenue. Just please state your name for the record.
Hello, good evening, hello everybody.
State your name, sir, for the record. Your name?
My name is Paris, last name is Agani.
Okay, does anybody have any...
...his friend, and he couldn't come today because he was on the work. That's why I come and stay here.
Are you the manager of the place?
No, I was the old owner, before I was owner, just I sold for him.
Okay.
And he's the owner. He couldn't come because he had a client, he supposed to work.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? Okay, since you have anything in order, we usually don't approve it for someone else, but I don't wanna hold your business up here, so I'm gonna make a motion to approve the victualing license.
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilman Juicy, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman DiLorenzo, any questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? You guys have it. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Okay. Item number 13, Taco Bell. Pietro Scorpio of 45 Spicer Street requests to appear to discuss the noise and loud music coming from drive-through at Taco Bell during early morning hours. Mr. Scorpio?
Good afternoon.
Just state your name for the record, sir?
My name is Pietro Scorpio, I live at 45 Spicer Street.
Okay.
What can I say? Complaint after complaint after complaint. The noise is just kinda unbearable at times. The only thing I can do is call the police department. They'll show up and whoever it was that ordered their food was making loud noise, just drives away like it's no big deal. I don't know where to start, to tell you the truth. It's been an ongoing thing since 1982. Now, here it is, 2017, and it's the same thing all over again. Only thing is, the building's even closer to my house. I'm trying to protect myself and my mother from this, and I have no foot to stand on. I can't go over there and say anything to anyone. I called the police department, they just tell me really there's no law against music, but if it's an excess, I mean, come on now, this is ridiculous. I cannot stop my lawnmower at midnight.
What kind of, Mr. Scorpio, what kind of, what kind of disturbance? Is that people hanging around, are they...
No, I'm talking about pounding music. Pounding music. This is ridiculous. I mean, I have to defend myself somehow. How? How do I defend myself? I can only come to so many town council meetings. I stopped calling the police. Something needs to be done here. I, I, I don't know what to say, what to do. I can only say that this is an issue that needs to be resolved.
Mr. President, Councilman? Mr. Scorpio, I know I've called on your behalf. Our current chief has looked into the matter. He told me that he would periodically have the cops go there and monitor.
Yep.
Have you had a conversation with Taco Bell?
I, you know, this, this has been going on for so long. I've actually had a couple of conversations about complaints, you know, one of my neighbors was working there, he was busting my chops, keys my car. They fired. I mean, as far as what type of conversation, what are you talking about?
Well, have you asked them, you know, what they're doing about, you know, their customers with all our noise, I mean...
No, usually every, every time I spoke to them was it. You know, they, they come up with some type of solution thinking it's gonna work, and that's, it's not helping. You know, they're telling me they're gonna shut the menu boards off so people know that they're closed, but they're leaving all the lights on, people are pulling up, beating their horns, two o'clock in the morning, saying, hey, you know, I was here before two o'clock.
Well, I know, I know that they planted the advertities, they repositioned the lighting...
Yeah, but that does nothing compared to pounding music like that.
No, I understand that, but what I'm trying to say is it seems like they're very...
Trying to cooperate some?
Correct. They're pretty cooperative when issues come, you know, issues arise. So that's why I'm asking, you know, if you've had the conversation with them. Because we, to be honest with you, I've probably called the chief four or five times. I mean, in the last year, you've probably called me four or five times.
Well, it's at the point that where I'm gonna stop calling the police department because it's obviously not getting away. I don't know what's the...
Mr. President?
Councilman?
I'd like to make a motion that we send a letter to the Colonel of the Police Department asking him to do a thorough analysis of the situation and to provide us with any recommendations that we might potentially take action on.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilwoman Brady, is there a second? Second? Seconded by Councilman DeStefanis, any questions? Councilman?
The noise you're hearing, is it people parking there, or is it the drive-thru that you're hearing, which, is it a vote?
There's like twenty cars in there at one time. So for me to go out there and figure out who it was is kinda stupid.
Right. So it's the parking lot that they're gonna, they're staying there and eating. It's not the drive-thru part?
No, it's the drive-thru part.
It is the drive-thru part.
Because they're waiting for their food, they're drunk, the bullets are in, and, you know, what can I say? Twenty cars in that parking lot? Who did it? I don't know.
Right.
I can't go onto that parking lot. It's kinda stupid for me to go onto that parking lot. I did it once already. I had twenty kids around me. They called the police department, but I'd get arrested because I, I'm in the parking lot with a pipe. They told the police department I had a gun. It cost me like nine grand to get out of jail, seven to nine grand. This is retarded. How long can this go on?
One second, sir. So a motion's been made, and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? You guys have it. Mayor, did you wanna add something?
Just a suggestion, and we've talked with this gentleman, and he's right. The catch-all here is that Taco Bell does a tremendous business, and especially late at night. I think if we're gonna notify the police, but I, I think it may be time to notify the management or the owners and have them come in. Because, you know, the police can give you a suggestion, give us a suggestion, but it's the management that's gonna have to take action. Maybe the change of the speaker, speaker maybe needs to face the building, you know, they could be making some, they could make some changes there, but I agree, the police have to be involved, but they can only do so much. I think the action that, you know, you're agreeing should be to get the owners and also...
Well, because it's been going on for so long, I would love permanent results.
I think it's time, I'll be honest with you, Mayor, I think it's time that we look at the two o'clock closing.
Well, you know, man...
Because we're drawing all the drunks.
You make a, you make a great suggestion, maybe that's where you will get their attention. You know, and many, as we've seen in many of these operations, you know, the person that may be the person that owns this place may live in New Jersey. So I think if you bring them in here before you, you are the licensing board, and that's when you'll probably get their attention.
Mr. President?
Councilman?
I'll make a motion that we send a letter to the management of Taco Bell on Minto Spring Avenue to attend our next meeting to discuss the matters that we've been talking about this evening that have been brought to our attention by Mr. Scorpio.
How about also letting the corporate office know, rather than just the management of the...
We would, we would anticipate that to the corporate offices as well.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilwoman Brady, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman DeStefanis, any questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Councilman DiLorenzo, do you have a question?
Yes, I think we should have the police here as well. So I'd like to make a motion that we have the police department here for you as well, so that we can hammer everything out right then and there.
Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman DiLorenzo, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Brady, any questions on that motion? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? You guys have it. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Item number 14, Ferrer Street. Residents of Ferrer Street to appear with a petition to discuss changing Ferrer Street to a one-way street. Just please state your name for the record.
Sure, my name is Sheila Cassay. I did present a petition signed by several of the residents on that street. Our concerns are, since Atomic Barbershop has moved into that location, the parking spots, and I have a picture here, along the side of the building, the strip mall, are now all taken. In the past, as cars are approaching up Minto Spring Avenue, turning into Ferrer, if we were heading down towards Minto Spring Avenue, we do have a stone wall, so it kinda obstructs the view of them to us and vice versa. And we used to be able to pull over into these parking spots. Those are the spots, and then this is just the... With, with the mall being as busy and successful as it is, with the addition of Atomic in that mall, we no longer can pull over to the side. And the second photo is, the width of the street isn't wide enough to accept a car coming up from Minto Spring Avenue and our being at the stop sign. So our suggestion, we've seen several near misses for accidents, some of us included in that, for it to be a one-way. I just think it's an accident waiting to happen.
Does anybody have any questions?
Mr. President?
Councilman?
As you probably all remember, I had brought this issue up, I believe, back in February or March, and I met with Ms. Cassay, and a stroke of irony, as I'm pulling onto Ferrer from Minto Spring, I almost hit somebody head-on as they were coming off of Ferrer onto Minto Spring. I personally use the road quite a bit. My sister-in-law owns a business in the, the strip mall there, and, you know, I'm inclined... the strip mall there, and, uh, you know, I'm inclined, having been there so much, I use Easter Street, which is the parallel street across the way. Um, just by way of history, we did refer to the ordinance committee, uh, we made a call to the police station, I believe, and, um, some sort of traffic study was done. Uh, but just based on this, uh, petition, there's, I think, in my mind, enough, uh, residents that are concerned with this issue, and I spoke with, uh, Mr. Mr. Fleming, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Fleming on the way in, and, and they're concerned as well. I, I think maybe we need a more formal traffic study done. Um, my inclination, and I guess I could make it in form of a motion, is, uh, make a motion to send a letter to the, uh, Police Department to do a formal study and present back to us in writing, uh, what their findings are.
Especially the hours that Atomic is open, because that's the...
Hey, one second, one second, one second. Motion, that's okay. Motion's been made by Councilwoman Amory, you seconded by Councilwoman Brady, any questions on that motion? Any of you none, all of us in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Right.
Well, I just wanted to say, if they're going to do the study, it should especially be the hours that Atomic is open, because that's where we would have pulled over to allow those cars to come up, because the street is not wide enough for two cars.
Okay, we'll add into the letter that it is during business hours.
Can I make a, I'm sorry, Mr. President, may I make a second motion?
Go ahead.
Um, Councilman Fielda just brought to my attention, he actually pulled up, uh, it looks like a Google Earth. We wanna, uh, maybe ask the clerk's office to look into whether or not that Plaza actually owns, uh, the land where those parking spots are on the side of the building, or whether they've actually commandeered part of Ferrer Street. Um, because the, the street actually comes to quite a, a bit of a narrow towards Mineral Spring, so, um, the specific motion is to have the clerk's office look into, um, the actual map and plot the land to see whether or not those parking spots are actually within the legal parameters.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilwoman Amory, you seconded by Councilwoman Brady, any questions on that motion? Any of you none, all of us in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? You guys have it. Councilman DeStefanis. Just, just out of curiosity, are you looking for the one way to be placed entering Ferrer?
I don't think it matters, um, you know, it, either way, just to limit the traffic coming in both directions. I, it does, I don't think it matters. I mean, I did list one way on the, on the, uh, petition, but it, as long as we only have one lane of traffic on that road, it will alleviate what we're dealing with currently. So I wouldn't want to say one way, and then they say, oh, well, it really was not feasible for that. The goal is to have it be one direction, whichever would be the safest by somebody who, you know, in traffic that, would have more knowledge about that than myself.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number fifteen, multi-purpose field complex, receive, receive request from Larisse J. Ordello Dagnall to appear to discuss the possibility of installing a multi-purpose field complex in North Providence High School. She is not attending tonight's meeting, so this item has to be moved to the January meeting.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Juicy, seconded by Councilwoman Brady. I know Doug, all of us in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Did you want to say something? I know you're here, Dr. Bucci.
Yes. Gatsby?
Yeah, it's, uh, this is going to be moved to January, but since you are here, I will allow you to...
Okay. Ruth Bucci, uh, North Providence District Three, and, um, I come before you to speak about the, uh, high school, uh, football, soccer, um, lacrosse field, the old football field, the upper field at the high school. And, um, I brought, um, a couple of documents that, um, I would like to have them put on record. One is, um, the, um, a summary of healthcare, um, health effects of artificial turf that I prepared. Um, uh, Councilman DiLorenzo asked me if I would prepare a summary of some of my past research, so I did that for him, and then I added citations this mon, uh, today, and so I have that for the council and the clerk, a copy each. And also, um, since I had put down quite a few different ideas, um, in an essay that was published in The Breeze this week, I brought a, a copy of that also for the, uh, excuse me, I'm sorry, I have one more. Um, for the, for the council and the clerk, it's, there's one each there. And that, I figured that would save time in, in any explanation that I, I might want to give, since I've, I've written, uh, quite a few, uh, ideas there. Okay, so, um, I did prepare summary marks to go through, um, just go over that. Um, okay, um, my request, um, tonight, with respect to the high school field, is that the town council, uh, contact those who are knowledgeable about designing, engineering, and building real grass fields, athletic fields, and to get an assessment of what needs to be done, and what it will cost, and a timeframe to construct a renewed grass athletic field. And if grant money is going to be sought, I request that the application be for a natural grass field and not for artificial turf. And so if you, I, if you want to refer to the, um, essay titled "Use Natural Grass at North Providence, um, Field," I'll just point out a couple of things from, from this essay that was published in this week's Breeze. Um, North Pro, it is possible to get information on how to build and maintain a real grass athletic surface. I've mentioned a few different sources here, URI, uh, Kingston Turf Farm, uh, on, uh, there's a, a big, um, complex, um, a little further south. Um, uh, I had Ian, um, Ian, um, the turf expert come, uh, two years ago, and he spoke, and he works for, uh, he worked for, uh, Tom Irwin Advisors, which does, um, uh, advisors on how to build fields, both types, but of course, I, I'm, I'm in favor of the, uh, real grass. And, uh, real grass lasts much longer than artificial turf, and all documentation shows that. And the field we've got up there at the high school, that was built probably the early seventies, that's just the upper field, and it's still, it's, so that's almost fifty years, and it's still, you know, it, it needs to be redone, but it, but that's almost fifty years, it's gone. Okay, so now if you just look at the other, um, of information on, um, health effects, this is really a two-page summary, but with the citation, it looks, uh, quite a bit longer. Uh, on this, I'll just say that, um, the underlying fact that all sources agree on is that there are, uh, many claims of injury and illness resulting from play on artificial turf, but that, um, there are ongoing studies. Everyone agrees that there are ongoing studies on the effects of artificial turf on health. The Rhode Island Department of Health mentions that in its, in its, uh, material that it sent here to the, uh, to the council. Uh, earlier studies were not comprehensive, so that there is no way to know whether artificial turf poses an unreasonable risk of harm. Rhode Island Department of Health notes that while past studies have not found that artificial turf poses a significant health hazard, studies are ongoing. And Rhode Island Department of Health mentions the State of California Office of Environmental Health Assessment and the EPA who are currently studying it. Also, RIDAC cannot substantiate claims of, uh, artificial turf causing cancer without a well-designed study, which it does not have. Uh, and so RIDAC does not rule out the, uh, possibility that artificial turf may cause cancer. A second point, I'll just mention a couple of points, is that children should not be playing on, uh, on the artificial turf. Many, um, uh, doctors and other scientists have, have said that children are vulnerable, and especially, um, uh, doctors from Mount Sinai Hospital have stated that children should not play on artificial turf, because there is not convincing evidence of safe, of the safety of artificial turf. And a, a third point is that there are increasing concerns over the numbers of young athletes who have played on artificial turf who have developed leukemia, non-Hodgkin lymphoma, testicular cancer, prostate cancer, and this is from a, a state senator in California, uh, which I, I cite in, in some, in my summary, uh, and other forms of cancer. And there are many other chemicals in, um, in artificial turf. Many have not even been tested for toxicity, and of those that have been tested, of, of, about twenty percent, about half have been tested in one study that they had, about ha, about twenty percent of that half were carcinogenic, and about forty percent of that half were irritants. Okay, besides the chemical problems, there's, uh, heat-related illnesses, there's injuries, especially lower extremity injuries, infections, uh, possi, we don't know, possibly, so there's no systematic testing to, to know what types of, of infections may occur because of play on artificial turf, but we do know that there is an attempt at sanitation, uh, sanitizing the artificial turf, which some parents, when I did the, when I went around and asked all the parents to, the people to sign the petition a couple of years ago, that was mentioned to me by one of the parents where his, his daughter played on the, uh, the field in, in, um, or his child played on the field in Cranston, and he didn't accept that that field was sanitized properly. Uh, and then besides, uh, the individual illnesses or, uh, supposed illnesses or possible illnesses, there's environmental pollution and, um, the, um, release of, uh, chemicals from, into the air and into the water from artificial turf. So that's just a brief summary of, of what I've got, I've given you tonight, and in conclusion, I, I just requested the town council, please contact those who are knowledgeable about designing, engineering, and building real grass fields, and to get an assessment of what needs to be done up at the high school, uh, before, uh, you know, a decision is made to do it one way, let's look at what really could be done there. And I requested the, uh, the town council protect all of us from any potential problems of artificial turf, and the known ones as well, and to determine the costs and the timeframe that might be used to, uh, construct a renewed athletic field to get it up to snuff where we want it to be. And, um, and again, the grant money, if there comes to be, then, um, I'm hoping it's for aut, it's for real grass and not artificial turf. And I think we can have a real natural grass athletic field that we can be proud of, that will attract people to our community, that will be healthy for our players, and that our neighborhood would prosper, and our town would prosper with a real brass athletic field at the high school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me speak.
So, Mr. Chairman, I know, uh, Mrs. Bucci has been here before, she's visited our office quite a few times, we've been in touch with her. I want to publicly thank Mrs. Bucci for the time that she's put in on this one issue. But I also, and I think I can speak for all of us, to assure Mrs. Bucci that we're nowhere near putting a field in at that high school at this point in time. The closer we get that we have the funds to, uh, put a new field in, or build a new field, so to say, that this will be a, a discussion. Um, I want to make sure that Mrs. Bucci understands that this is not, how can I say, uh, a done deal, that it's gonna be a synthetic field. We don't know that at this point in time, but I know that she's very, very concerned for the health of the, the children in our town, or anyone who may use that field, and so I think that we all need to assure Mrs. Bucci that before there's a field that's going to be built there or anywhere else in this town, that a full investigation as to the health, um, of our children will be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item number sixteen, Hopkins Manor, receive request from Mark S. Levek, administrator of Hopkins Manor, to appear to request approval of work that needs to be done at the facility after hours stated in the town noise ordinance. Is Mr. Levek here?
Good evening. Mark Levek, I serve as the administrator of Hopkins Manor, six-ten Smithfield Road.
Thank you.
I appear before you to ask your permission to allow me to complete a project at the facility. Specifically, I'm looking to have a commercial operation, Cintas, come in to effect a deep cleaning in our kitchen. We serve nearly two hundred, uh, infirm, vulnerable residents, and our dietary needs are, are met through our commercial kitchen. We maintain it, but, uh, we're also subject to both CMS and DOH rules, regulations, and food safety and sanitation are very high on their list. I'm looking to augment our efforts to get to, uh, some very difficult areas, under appliances, between appliances, that my staff can't address. It's a steam cleaning operation, uh, typically it's done overnight, but I want to be a good neighbor, and I don't want to run afoul of the noise ordinance, so what I'm seeking is permission to have a company come in over the course of two evenings. I can't get into the kitchen before seven PM due to regulations that specify timeframes between meals, so what I'm proposing, two consecutive evenings from seven PM to eleven PM, would allow me to accomplish the deep clean and ensure optimal safety for our food handling and for our residents.
Does anybody, uh, the councilman from the district, or Councilwoman Brady, have any questions? Still there? Councilman?
I have no issue.
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilman Juicy, seconded by Councilman Fiola. Any further questions? Yes, that's, yeah, being said, all of us in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? You guys have it. Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Item number seventeen, stop sign. Councilwoman Brady, I request discussion and possible vote for a two-way stop sign on Newton Street at the intersection of Brook Street. Residents will speak on this matter. Councilman.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I put this item on the agenda, uh, at the request of residents in the area who have concerns about, um, a lot of, many, many vehicles who seem to be heading toward Rhode Island College, uh, going, uh, from Wenosquaw Tucket to Rhode Island College or returning from Rhode Island College, uh, gaining what appears to be a high rate of speed, and it seems that, uh, a, a device such as a stop sign would help slow those vehicles down. And, uh, I, I did go to the location on several occasions just to observe this myself, and if you look at the map you have, you can see that, um, from Fruit Hill Avenue, there's a street, uh, Salvin Street. So this is the, uh, entrance point for many cars, and this does peak, by the way, uh, mostly in the morning and in the afternoon when students are leaving campus, but because courses take place all day long and students are leaving the campus up until seven PM at night, it is rather an ongoing process, but it does peak in the morning, probably about, uh, quarter, quarter of eight, and then in the afternoon, between three and four. But when they enter at Salvin, that's where they have an opportunity from Fruit Hill to gain speed, and it is, as you can see, as the map indicates, uh, although it's not done very clearly, there is a narrowing where, uh, Salvin merges into Newton Street, and, uh, it does appear to be very dangerous when, when these vehicles are gaining speed and they're not deterred by at least a stop sign at the intersection of Brook. And what I was informed of was that also, uh, some of the vehicles use Rosedale and then approach Brook to, uh, kind, kind of avoid that narrow passage. But we do have a resident here who would like to, uh, contribute to this conversation, and I'm here just to ask for consideration, uh, to refer to the ordinance committee. Thank you, Councilman, Councilwoman Brady. Appreciate it. My name is Eleanor Carrara. I live at Seven Newton, intersection of Newton and Brook Street. Um, I've been there approximately thirteen years. Um, it is a three-way intersection, um, highly trafficked by college students and the neighborhood, um, and it is a cut-through using Rosedale and Salvin, which turns into Newton. Um, Salvin and Newton is a very narrow street, really a, a one, one-car road, but, um, it's still a two-way, um, and they do, um, speed, speed quite rapidly by my house. Um, I'm just doing this for the safety of my neighborhood, um, you know, it, it doesn't really affect me one way or the other, um, except for the fact that I'd hate to see a collision at that three-way intersection with no stop sign.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, motion's been made by Councilwoman Brady. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman DiLorenzo. Any questions? Maybe none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? You guys have it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Item number eighteen, trash transfer station. Councilman Distefanis requests discussion and possible vote on city of Pawtucket, proposed trash, trash, transfer station on Concord Street. Councilman.
Mr. President, members of the community off of Charles Street, between Charles Street and Winmore Street, have approached me within the last four weeks concerning the proposed trash transfer station that Pawtucket is looking to implement on Concord Street, moving it from Brado Avenue. Those residents currently abut the city of Pawtucket, and Pawtucket is looking to, and not to get into the actual reasons why, but currently their trash transfer station is in a neighborhood. And they're looking to move that because they're looking to truck their trash, train their trash out to another state. So I've attended two meetings. At those meetings, there have been petition signings by residents within our community, the Pawtucket Fair Lawn neighborhood, the city of Providence council people have attended. I've spoken with a few council people in Providence who are in opposition of the trash transfer station move to Concord Street. The city of Providence has, council has issued a resolution to the city of Pawtucket stating its opposition. I personally signed the petition. Currently Providence, not to just keep getting on about what Providence is doing, but currently Providence is looking at, you know, how the city of Pawtucket plans on getting to this facility without their trash haulers using Providence roads, which also poses a problem for us in North Providence. Will they be using our roads? Currently, they are using our roads. So the concerns that I have with this facility being built so close to our border, to me, it seems like Pawtucket is trying to alleviate their issue, which I understand, put it in an industrial area, but most importantly, put it on the border of their own community. And I think them putting it on the border creates an issue for our community. You know, what is this impact going to do to our neighborhoods? What's the smell going to be like? What's the noise going to be like with these haul, these trash vehicles going through? You know, whether they come off One Forty-Six to Mineral Spring to Smithville Road, it's still an impact to our community. So I'd like to join Providence. I'd like to make a motion to send a resolution to the city of Pawtucket stating the town's opposition to the proposed transfer station, trash transfer station on Concord Street.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilman Distefanis. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman DiLorenzo. Any questions? Councilman, I have a question. What is the city of Pawtucket City Council's position on this matter?
The two council people that I've spoken with who represent the area, who were at the meeting, who were actively signing the petition along with me, they did not, they, you know, obviously, they're, you know, signing the petition, they're not in favor of it. I don't know what the balance of the council is. I've only spoken to the Providence City Council members that represent the area in Providence abutting this area and the two council people in Pawtucket who were at that meeting.
And...
No, I can get it though.
Okay. All right. So a motion's been made and seconded. Any further questions?
Mr. President, I just have a question for Councilman Distefanis. Since you were part of those meetings, do you know if either Pawtucket or Providence has done any traffic studies or studies with regards to the smell?
I don't, I don't think Pawtucket has because the mayor, to everyone who signed the petition, the mayor has, you know, issued a letter stating that they're in the preliminary stages, that hearings will be made. I know that Councilman Nicholas Narducci is the one proposing figuring out a way to get them to not utilize their streets, and I believe he is issuing a traffic study for Providence at this time. But to be clear, I don't know. I could, I can call Nick tomorrow and find that out.
We should see if we can get one too for us. All right. Any further questions? Maybe none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you.
I'm going to go back and do the, you know, let me do number nineteen, board appointments, discussion and vote on appointments of the zoning board to replace the recently deceased Ronald Monticavo and the alternate appointment this may create. Councilman DiLorenzo?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Brendan Snodgrass.
Second. Nomination's been made by Councilman DiLorenzo, seconded by Councilwoman Brady. Any questions?
Yeah, I got a question on that.
Councilman?
Brendan, you're second alternate right now, right?
Actually, uh...
You just...
Mr. Juicy, before Mr. Monticavo, Chairman Monticavo was deceased, I believe I was, he had made me first alternate, and then Mr. Martone was second alternate, as far as, that was the last I knew. Chuck, you might be able to...
No, I think, I think Monticavo was first alternate and you were second alternate.
Monticavo's the chairman.
I don't know.
Minority, who's a minority, but he was...
Yeah.
So, no, good evening. Ron Monticavo was the...
Just state your name for the record, sir.
Chouse Pollock, I believe, chairman of the zoning board. Mr. Monticavo was actually the chairman. Brendan's been, actually, an alternate for five years now. We've had, we've had a previous appointment bypassing Brendan because Brendan was on the minority side of, I guess, he's a Republican. So the last position was a Democrat that was brought in. But Ron's passing, it is a Republican position. I, I actually thank Councilman DiLorenzo for recommending Brendan. Brendan's been an asset. I'm able to talk to Brendan, you know, just pick up the phone, he's always there. And I actually would like to see Brendan appointed to that, that board position.
Do we need now a second?
We are going to need an alternate.
So you're going to...
So now we have to...
So Brendan, Brendan, if he gets appointed, that would create a position for alternate.
Alternate, Republican.
Yes, Republican.
So you're going to come up with a list for us?
Yeah, we have. Right here.
All right, okay.
Yeah, we have a candidate who's actually here tonight as well, Tony Costello, who's interested in the second alternate position. So the first hand, we actually got something lined up.
Now, I want to get it straightened up. I know you guys...
Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman DiLorenzo, seconded by Councilwoman Brady to appoint Brendan Snodgrass to the full-time minority position on the zoning board. Any questions on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? You guys have it. Good luck, Brendan. Thank you. And... No problem. And I will read this into the record. Dear Town Council and Mayor, it was recommended by our committee to nominate Anthony Costello to be considered to fulfill the vacancy for a minority alternate on the zoning board. I was appointed in November two thousand sixteen to the personnel board. I am active in the community as a coach in the North Providence Smithfield Babe Ruth League. I look forward to continuing to serve the town. Thank you. Anthony Costello, chairman, thank you. North Providence Republican Town Committee, forty-three Dickinson Avenue, North Providence, Rhode Island. Do I have a motion to... Yeah, it's actually a good question. Our question was just if you could just serve on two boards, but you can, you can, you can only get paid for one. So do I have a motion to appoint Anthony Costello to the alternate position? Motion's been made by Councilman Distefanis. Seconded by Councilman Amber Rees. Any questions? Maybe none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? You guys have it. Okay, I'm going to go back to the ordinances. Proposed ordinances, notice was given of a public hearing on this day whereby the town council will consider the passage of the following proposed ordinances. Number five, ordinance seventeen dash zero one four. An ordinance of the town of North Providence entitled Through Trucking and Trucks, Over Ninety-Five Hundred Pounds Gross Weight Prohibited on East Avenue in the town of North Providence. Do I have a motion to pass ordinance seventeen dash zero one four? Second. Motion's been made by Councilman Juicy, seconded by Councilman Distefanis. Any questions? Maybe none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? You guys have it. Item number six, ordinance seventeen dash zero one five, an ordinance amending chapter nineteen, article ten, section nineteen dash forty-seven of the Code of Ordinances of the town of North Providence entitled Four Way Stop Sign. Governor, motion to pass ordinance seventeen dash zero one five.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Juicy, seconded by Councilwoman Brady. Any questions? Maybe none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? You guys have it. Item number seven, ordinance seventeen dash zero one six, an ordinance amending chapter nineteen, article seven, section nineteen dash thirty of the Code of Ordinances of the town of North Providence entitled No Parking on Certain Streets Generally to Provide for Certain Parking Restrictions on Spicer Street in the town of North Providence. Do I have a motion to pass ordinance seventeen dash zero one six? Motion's been made by Councilman Distefanis, seconded by Councilwoman Brady. Any questions? Maybe none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? You guys have it. Item number eight, ordinance seventeen dash zero one seven, an ordinance amending ordinance number fifteen dash zero one one entitled Establishment of a Tax Exemption and Tax Stabilization Agreement for Property Located at One Eighty-four Wenosquettucket Avenue, North Providence, Rhode Island. Do I have a motion to pass ordinance seventeen dash zero one seven? Motion's been made by Councilman Juicy, seconded by Councilman DiLorenzo. Any questions? Maybe none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? You guys have it. Item number twenty, uncollectible tax. Received letter from tax collector Claudette Mooney for uncollectible taxes for two thousand six to be removed for the accounts receivables in the following amounts. Five thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars and twelve cents for real estate, one hundred and twenty-one thousand one hundred and eighty-six dollars and forty-six cents for tangibles, one hundred and fifty-four thousand sixty-nine dollars and fifty-eight cents for motor vehicles, and two thousand eight hundred and forty-six dollars and thirty-one cents for expired legal fees. You all have the explanation in front of you. Is there any questions on that? Okay, do I have a motion to remove the following taxes from the uncollectible tax list? Motion's been made by Councilman Juicy. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Brady. Any questions on this? Maybe none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Item number twenty-one, claim submitted. Town council discussion and possible vote with regard to the claim received from Detoya Herring by attorney Rob Levine, five fifty-four Douglas Avenue, Providence, Rhode Island. Do I have a motion to send this to the claims committee?
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Juicy, seconded by Councilwoman Brady. Any questions? Maybe none. All those in favor? All those opposed? You guys have it. Item number twenty-two, claims committee report. Town council discussion and possible vote with regard to the claims committee report and approval, denial, or referral of claims within said report to be presented by Councilman Faola. Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have three claims presented before us this evening. The first one is bodily injury, Detoya Herring. That claim is denied. Second claim, Mr. Richard Bowman. This was for property damage that is approved for three thousand one hundred ninety-seven dollars. And the last claim is for Chicarella for property damage that is denied.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept the report?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Brady, seconded by Councilman Distefanis. Any questions? Maybe none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? You guys have it. Item number twenty-one, finance committee report. Town council discussion in action with regard to the finance committee report to be presented by Councilman Distefanis. Councilman?
Mr. President, the finance committee met on November twentieth. Please excuse the minutes. They say November sixteenth at the top, so that was an error on my part. Meeting was on the twentieth. Meeting was called to order at six P.M. The finance committee discussed two things. One was tax abatements over a thousand, which we sent, are in the process of sending a letter to the tax assessor's office to ask questions on. So those will continue to the next meeting. And the second was the tax stabilization agreement for alignment loft. The finance committee unanimously recommended in favor of approving the extension for the one year. So I make a motion to accept the minutes.
Motion's been made by Councilman Distefanis. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman DiLorenzo. Any questions? Maybe none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? You guys have it. Item number twenty-four, tax addendums. Town council discussion in action and possible vote for the approval of the list of tax addendums received from the tax assessor in the amount of two hundred and fifty-six dollars and sixty-one cents for motor vehicles. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Brady, seconded by Councilman Juicy. Any questions? Maybe none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? You guys have it. Item number twenty-five, tax abatements under a thousand. Town, town council discussion in action and possible vote for the approval of the list of tax abatements under a thousand received from the tax assessor in the amount of one thousand three hundred and fifty-six dollars and five cents for real estate, five thousand two hundred and seventy-nine dollars and forty-two cents for motor vehicle, and one thousand one hundred and seventy-six dollars and eighty-two cents for tangibles. Do I have a motion to abate?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Brady, seconded by Councilman Juicy. Any questions? Maybe none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? You guys have it. Before we adjourn, I just want to wish everyone a healthy and happy and Merry Christmas. And I'm sure we'll all see each other...
You as well.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just have a whole ten seconds here of time and also happy holidays to everyone. But Mary Ann, could you put me on the agenda for next month? We had an issue this past week with the people, this is the second time doing construction on a weekend, and someone without a permit, one with the permit. So I think it's time that maybe we think about introducing or passing an ordinance that will not allow any construction on a Sunday or a holiday in the town of North Providence. This is the second complaint we've had in about a month, and I think maybe it's time that, you know, I want you guys to digest that. So if you could place us, me, on the agenda for next month, Mary Ann, that would be for the discussion and a possible vote.
I was under the impression we already had one for Sundays.
Yeah, I don't think so.
All right. Sounds good.
So we'll check it out and I, but, thank you.
All right. Have a motion or adjourn.
Second.
I have a question. I need to go back, but I have a question. On the uncollectible test, you got fifty-five hundred and sixty-four dollars in real estate from two thousand and six. Can anybody explain to me what it is for and why they're not paying it?
I guess the question... I guess the question is, what did they do about it for ten years?
Well, that's the first question. My second question really, more so limited is, the house is going to still be there, whether someone didn't pay it and it got sold and it got sold to someone else, someone is responsible for that tax. I want to know why we keep on abating it. I have a question about that.
Okay, it's Rhode Island. There's, there's the answer to your question. The list is uncollectible in the state of Rhode Island, general law, title nine, chapter nine dash one, section nine dash one dash thirteen, which tells them they should be...
I think the issue is, I'll, I'll send you something on it. I'll send you something on it, but I think the issue is, is that there is a state law out, and I agree with you, property is still there and deed should be good, but there's in the state law that they call an alienation of property, and sometimes if it, if it changes in a period of time that's gone by and it hasn't collected, it, it could be deemed uncollectible. But I'll send something to you on it. I know there's a rule on that. I'll find out the time period for you and send it to you. But I think, because you're right, you should, you should say, hey, if all the property there in the order keeps changing, some of it should be the tax, but there's an operation of law that I think we lose the mean after a period of time.
Was the original force, laws, or whether someone bought it and the previous person paid the taxes? We should get out of what's coming to us.
But I think, as far as this is my end, it is a six-year statute on alienation, but I'll, I'll put that for you on it.
Thank you.
We'll make sure that it's right.
Mr. President? Councilman? Before we adjourn, I just want to wish everybody a happy... Before we adjourn, I just want to wish everybody a happy and safe holiday season and Merry Christmas to all your families.
You as well. You as well.
Merry Christmas.
Okay, motion to adjourn. Second. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? I have it.